No, 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 I see there's one here.
There's one, then there are.
Then there should be one at the back.
No, no, the roving mics are not for.
Is it?
Yeah.
But you know what, what is it there, this one? You see this microphone, this thing?
Yeah.
If we can bring it closer to this round, you know?
Okay.
Then we have another one.
Okay, that's right.
Across the back. Okay. Then we get Marshall, so we will Marshall there.
Okay. We request people all be handling roving mics. We request people all be handling mics. People will be requested to come. You don't have to raise up your hands. Yes, the chairperson will request members of public to come, that so that you come and present, again. Yes. Yeah, there will be, no, no, not now. There are microphones that will wait for the chairperson to come. Okay. Let us put our hands down until the chairperson comes.
Let's get the marshals next to, next to the mics. You see there are two mics, that. You see there are two mics. There's one here, there's one there.
There's another one here.
Oh, there's another one. Okay. Ah, trouble, 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 trouble. I don't know, I can see it. I can see it.
Let's just get the mics sorted out, that's perfect. Let's do this. Welcome back. We hope that we have all enjoyed lunch so that we get more energy. I want to draw your attention to the fact that, I want to draw your attention to the fact that we have cameramen and women amongst us who are doing a sterling job. The footage of what they are capturing is fed live on TV, on Channel 408, on D S TV. So, those who are not here with us are watching us and seeing what is Limbombo up to. Let me also make this point that we are now in province number nine, which is the last province. And our experience is that provinces have kept on improving on the quality of inputs that we have received from those that we have passed. So it means province number two was better than province number one. Province five, province number four, province number eight was better than province number. So it means province number nine must be better than? All of them. Now, the good news is that of the inputs that were made in the early session, Limbombo has outshined all of them. It is now this leg that will determine what becomes of this session. So the more disciplined we are, we maximize on our speaking time, we raise the issues without fear or favor, is the more we will be able to get many people to speak. So, you must not be the one who's caught by this camera sleeping. Such that people at home say, no, we sent this one to go to engage and he was found sleeping. How we propose we deal with this session is that we now literally have two hours remaining because there are people who must travel 300 plus kilometers. Inside the hall, we have 930 plus people. If we allow everyone to speak, it means each person has 12 seconds. So the first thing that we must ask is that of those who do not want to speak but want to make a submission, you can do a write-up and submit it to the table at the back. Your input will be considered. It equally means that when you are given an opportunity to speak, you don't have to deliver a keynote address. You can pass your message and note some of the things, again. So what we propose to do is that we take five hands from this side, we take five hands from this side, and we utilize the mics that are in front of us, again. And then as we continue to have more time, we will take more hands and more hands. Is that acceptable? Thank you very much. Let's note five hands. Number one, number two, number three, and four. Three and four. Number five with their headphones. Let's take those five from this side. Reka Thomas. Can the two speakers here come to the front as well so that? One, two, three, four. There's a seat, Mama, you can go and sit there.
All right. It is Thomas. I'm a petrole from Hashan, Mama Tepe community. What I have experienced with our government is that our government is relying on consultants. They are not able to take responsibility and accountability. In our case, we lodged a land claim to land claim commission. But that land claim commission took a long, our claim is 20 years old. In 2015, the land claim commission bought five farms from Montana for us and they didn't tell us that they bought land for us. Until we, we, we make an appointment with them on the 27th of February 2017 this year. That's where we were officially informed and given the documents that they bought our land. And since they bought that land, they rented it to a company called Maghe P C, P T Y L T D. Amongst those farms, there is a farm that is paying rent of 1.2 million. I don't know how much they chowed, how much money they eated, which was supposed to be, to come to us since 2015. And I was shocked when Matulemuzeka charging issues of Mama Tepe chairman again. Lastly, I, when, after we met with Jelama Porto, we cross-questioned him until he confessed that there is a deal between him, Matulemuzeka, and Nomfudogo Porto and Jacob Shabango. The retarding of the processing claims was about to eat our money or to rip from us. So, we think the government that we are having is led by vultures. Imagine a parliamentarian coming down to us just to loot our money. What is this all about? The Honorable Kalima Mutlant, after hearing that you are the head of this high panel, I thought you will calm, you will calm these people. Since the land claim commission was not given timeframe, they developed an interest in our claims. They started to loot everything there. It's a chaos indeed. You see, it's a very chaos. Why should this happen while we are having a government? Our government doesn't have monitoring and supervision. They just formed the commissions that are not having timeframe, like Kada Commission. It's failing to produce the results. The land claim commission doesn't do anything with the land. And what we are creating as government is that you are now exaggerating a hatred between blacks and whites. We are now facing the whites as the enemies while our real enemy is our government. Do you know, Zesetu Company is the advisor of premier when it comes to agriculture. It's also the advisor to the president when it comes to agriculture. And the land that we have claimed amongst other farms is those that Zesetu is staying there. Do you think Zesetu can advise Zuma to take back the land to the communities? They will hold the land. So, we are not comfortable with this government.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That is exactly three minutes. And that's what I forgot to mention that each speaker has a maximum of three minutes. And then we move on. Thank you very much.
I read, I read Tom Shaba Baholo, Karli Fila Nakwanenyan. Salosama Thomas, I give dedication of municipal countries. Let her not near close, I never will be one. Karaka, let her, oh, she have a twa hooche ma ja, oh, basa kanja lo, hooche chue. Oh, she have a hooche chue, oh, basa kanja. Timba kai, she ngele, o, lema la, Mramtante. Ya, we be, eh, ekte, eh, S G Ps. Ma, principal, I'm no niaka, va, twa, bahos, tsebe se lo. Va, tuhela, va, rudish, va, kale, this principal, ja, kale. Di, lo, cha, cha, this specter, ja, kale. Ngele, o, leba, le. Ya, baharu, promotion policies, ja, ba, na, ba, skolu. Promotion policies, ja, ba, na, ba, skolu, di, are, ke, sroba, broko. Let her, wa, na, o, pasijeka, o, from five, Africa University, para, ha, umiti, de, requirements. The point system, ga, e, qualify. Le, le, khurume, ja, ba, na, ka, wa, kuna, wa, eh, ji, a, o. Le, 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 ntu, re, koo, rule.
The taxation. The taxation, Mramtante, Renar, tu, fe, che, o, dwa, ler, bo, lae. Le, ka, ma, vi, kene, ni, ni, ka, le, rata, ku, taxation, ya, the elderly, ngele, le, le, taxation, eh, is too high. Ya, ri, email, la, bi, la, rasa, ho, na, o, fe, pa, va, di, koo, la, na, cha, re, ina. Ya, we be, eh, Medical Schemes Act, cha, le, na. Han, i, wa, ro, pa, tel, mu, tu, pa, tel, a, 7,000. Ma, ra, ka, September, Medical Scheme, wa, o, fe, li, le. Ku, re, ga, bu, tsu, bu, tsu, le, rta, shaki. Social grants, ye, on, na, ki, pe, pe, eh, le, ba, e, buli, chi, ki, pe, pe, eh, rta, koe, le, bu, cha, Mramtante. Ki, ti, cha, re, msa, di, aga, gram, sa, di, aga, ve, le, ti, cha, re. Na, ki, ba, re, ka, motor, fantain. Hey, Tomar, Ritar, par, i, jala, msa, di, o. Ka, or, ki, ki, o, eh, na, ki, o, ki, o, kri, a, cha, le. Eh, da, eh, le, o, re, ba, ba, na, ro, la, eh, ka, ga, eh. Ka, or, msa, di, ha, am, hunu, o, fe, pa, mon, na. Ka, mostly, bar, ba, ne, che, o, eh, ba, le, di, Civil Services. Renar, be, re, ba, re, ka, di, fe, me, par, ka, ja, dwa, le, o, so, or, msa, di, mo, bu, philun, dwa, ga, ha, hunu, o, fe, pa, mon, na. Ja, le, ke, se, ne, se, o, ro, bo, la, ya. Ki, cha, ne, che, o, le, mku, il. There are no speakers noted for this side. This mic can be switched off. There are no speakers noted for this mic. All our speakers are in that end now.
All right. Ndokala, guto, wa, te, sa. Nregusilo, wa, ka, ki, ka, na, eh, ve, le, mukomani. Eh, ve, le, mha, koe, lo, va, with our Limbopo Developments, the Gulas Forum Network. Firstly, to the Honorable High Panel, this is our submission on behalf of our people. Firstly, we, the, nde, ve, le, tribe, not isin, nde, ve, le. I saw there you put isin, nde, ve, le. Maybe you put it at the wrong place. We are the developers of Mukomani, still not yet recognized even today. Yeah, and then, eh, we did try our level best through our elders who wrote some novels, some poetry, books, preparing for our own language to be in syllabus through the system of this education. But until today, nothing has been happening. So, and secondly, actually, we want to submit in terms of M P, M P R D A. We say M P R D A must not be amended, but must be totally repealed based on fact that it's supersitting our constitutional, constitution and then it's violating the basic human rights. And then thirdly, eh, we say we need the title deeds as the dwellers at the rural settlements, not P T Os. If you afford to give the foreign big corporation like Anglo, like Ivan Plaz, a title deeds, then what is difficult for you to grant that, our land back. And then so, without any waste of time, Mr. Mashante, I think in 2013, you were there in the panel during the Makua engagement with you at the parliament pertaining the issue of M P R D A. We still reiterate that it's unconstitutional, it must be repealed. And then we've been trying to call the hotline of Jacob Zuma since he was a president. All we just getting there is the reference, no response. So please, here is my number. 079 eh, 631 9803. Eh, please give that number to Mr. Zuma to call me. I'm available, thank you. Eh, lastly, eh, lastly, eh, Mr. Mutlante, we are very much disappointed about our own ruling government, which claiming that we got 20 or more than 20 years of freedom to celebrate in our country, but to us is a shame. Firstly, all departments, eh, central departments of governments are corrupt. They don't listen to the people. And then on the issue of S L P, we plead that S L P must make a community inclusion because we cannot come up with something we say we develop, we give you a road, not knowing that we need a water. So, we must consult the community. Community must have a say in S L P, thank you. Don't forget to call me.
General, way, general, clear, way.
Ah, there are no people here. It's only there. They must actually kill his mic. On the next round, Baba, on the next round.
Arloje, arloje, arloje. Eh, regu, thome, pele, kandja, temu, tante, ka, re. Da, thxalama, mta, nju, wa, zebor, ge, sokoj, yu, anle. Le, ka, wa, mkhala, ki, ena, tu, ti, le, u, ri, sha, du, ho. Re, aloja, wa, mta, nju. Eh, ge, loja, le, tafle, u, ale, na, ki, we, e, guri, meri, je, si, cha, ba, se, le, le, nge, bo, le, le, so, na, ki, si, fur, le, le. Bam, shaat, arloje. Ya, le, di, ya, le, man, wa, le, le, ngote, le, cha, ka, se, be, che, pe. Retena, ta, we, ni, as, eh, jo. Eh, ki, akwari, abo, le, la, ro, le, la, le, o, che, ka, mka, le, le, o, ve, le. Eh, si, jo, mo, ba, thom, ba, si, Africa. Ki, eme, mo, ki, eme, jiri, na, ka, cha, si, jo, mo, province, ya, le, mpo, po. Ki, le, mu, du, la, sru, lo, a, bo. Ibe, le, ki, le, mo, ho, ka, ni, a, bo. Ibe, le, ki, ba, re, ka, ka, mo, le, chi, ka, ga, eh, le, ka, department. Ki, ba, re, ka, Department of Health Provincial. Eh, ta, ba, holo, she, ni, ka, mta, temu, tante, an, se, le, che, bu. Department, re, ka, mo, ka, cha, musho, mo, le, mpo, po, a, one, e, ba, wa, ri, di, am, ba, tu. O, thoma, ka, legislation. Kasu, ho, ba, re, a, ba, re, recognized. O, ba, na, ba, wula, parliament, ba, sa, ri, we, chi, ar, zbo, re, ka, wa, vi, cha, ma, o, chi. Ena, si, pe, di, se, re, ho, chi, ki, ho, chi, ka, nga, ka. Or, engba, re, tu, eh, hey, ba, wula, parliament. Ba, tu, ba, ba, le, ngamo, on, u, ale, 90% a, bo, na. Ba, si, pe, la, di, na, ka, cha, si, jo, ra, ta, lo, sa, ra. O, ka, nu, am, or, ra, ta, nga, kasu, jo, tu, nu, wula, el, o, na. Ba, tu, ba, nje, ba, ya, exile, le, ba, re, kona, ba, cha, ri, ndi, ti, lo, cha, ko, parliament. Ba, be, ba, si, ri, sha, ki, ma, to, si, are, eh, na. Ma, ra, ma, mu, ta, abas, re, le, ve, le, eh, ba, re, le, ve, la, ba, re, le, ve, la, fa, si. Ba, ri, ja, o, ka, re, na, re, se, lo. Ba, ha, ta, ki, ba, ri, vi, cha, reta, la, si, di, am, ba, re, le, mpo, pe, ve, che. Ma, ra, arne, eh, si, o, ka, si, re, program, un, invite, il, wa, si, mpe, lo, jo, ni, ka, re. Ke, sanji, ke, bo, le, 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 na, o, mbi, ri, jo, bu, nsa, re, ki, o, na. Ya, lo, wa, mbi, cha, wa, mbi, a, ka, mrao, wa, ni, ka, gur, and, ra, in, cha, ba, tu, ba, nje, ka, na. Ma, ro, sa, ni, ki, ke, bo, le, la, ku, jisha, di, tu. Re, a, we, er, ta, na, ka, ta, we, ni, ela, ya, ko, ma. Le, chi, er, o, ko, ma, le, re, ke, si, jo, ma, ri, ri, le, si, ho, wa. Le, chi, anga, ka, cha, ma, ho, a, di, ho, la, ta, bu. Ba, ta, ku, a, ko, me, ma, tu, iti, a, wa, ra, di, ba, na. Ba, ba, la, wa, na, ka, wa, na, wa, na, ba, be, a, price. Ibe, le, ba, patla, ka, Department of Health. Wa, e, ba, sanji, ba, hola, be. Ba, ya, ka, ma, tu, ma, be, di, re, na, re, bo, la, ke, ta. Ho, ta, na, province, ya, o, le, ngon, na, ba, ru, na, le, tu, ma, o, chi, ba, re, ka, traditional house. Ma, ra, a, one, official, di, na, ka, cha, si, jo, le, ba, ka, ki. Ka, or, le, na, re, kar, ro, ya, si, cha, ah, ba. We are part and parcel of the community. Re, wa, la, ka, er, na, ka, or, le, bo, le, la, ka, youth. Le, bo, le, la, ka, Women's League. La, bo, le, la, ka, ma, o, chi. Ma, ra, le, bo, le, la, ka, di, nga. Ena, le, pe, di, sha, ki, jo, o, na, la, la, le, re, so, sha, wu, chi. So, ke, ho, pe, la, or, nta, nta, temu, eh, kale, ma. Ke, ho, pe, la, ka, ma, tu, ma, be, di, o, re. Hey, le, lo, ko, parliament. Le, ska, la, re, na, le, si, cha, ba, si, si, nchi. Le, ba, la, le, di, na, ka, ma, re, le, si, ne, ta, ba, le, jo, na. O, nu, ale, re, ya, di, he, tu. Renar, she, che, renar, le, tremu, a, o, zebor. Di, lo, che, di, nchi, ri, di, wa, re, si, re, te, la, ya, we, a, ka, eh. Re, tu, ho, le, le, lo, che. Lu, ba, sa, ni, ka, o, ba, di, celebrate, you, ale, ka, le, ru, na, le, celebrate. Ya, le, re, ku, abu, tu, ko, ka, ro, o, nu, ale, ba, na, ba, or, na, ba, fe, la, msi, le, ni, a, N one. Ba, fe, la, ka, zela, ya, ya, we, a, ma, ka, du. Ba, hu, ka, di, accident. Ar, sa, ver, chi, si, jo, ra, ti, na, zela, ela. Ko, ti, di, re, a, ple, ke, ti, ngwa, ka, ngwa, le, ba, ka, ki. Ki, puso. Ma, polis, a, ba, fe, li, le, ka, N one, mo, ba, ilo, tu, cha, ba, tu. Ha, si, a, tu, ni. Ha, si, mko, kolo, ma, ki, u, bu, lo, mo. Ke, ho, pe, la, or, le, le, bu, le, di, shen, tu. Re, ni, ka, o, polu, cha, ma, pe, lo, ba, tu, ba, orin. Lo, ka, bu, cha, ka, na, o, ndro, ki, bo, le, la, mo, ki, eh, di, a, mur, du, la.
Can we, can we just clarify this point? There is no noted speaker from this mic. This mic must just be switched off because we are taking speakers from that side. We are still coming to this side. Just switch off the mic.
Eh, ngadi, gume, la, ka, fe. Ta, ba, ya, ta. Ku, ku, le, ri, bu, a, eh, ba, ta, pe. Ha, si, ku, ku, le, bu, a, ka, ba, tu, ba, ta, na, ka, na, de, na, mcho, la, mpo, re, ki, se, a. Eh, ke, ta, ke, le, cha, ba, zimbi, ke, na, Stephen, ki, eh. Kamata, sa, cha, ba, zimbi, manis, palit. Wa, o, fi, ti, le, eh, eh, project. Ya, ba, tu, ba, sa, iti, kanela. Ki, ku, pe, le, di, she, sholo, e, ka, ma, kansa, la, ra, ki, me, a, ra, orin. Re, ko, pa, o, mu, i. Wa, puso, ato, ri, hutak, ho, wa, na, hara, iti, kanela. Renali, Stephen, ki, ita, se, be, ri. I'm sure, na, no, se, fe, sa, wa. Ena, ba, ta, msa, mpo, ta, ba, re, si, tu, expire. Ena, eh, ban, tumile, eh, le, wa, na, orin, ki, le, bu, ta, happy, happy. Har, na, di, twa, le. Har, na, o, olo. Ren, na, mo, ta, sa, se, tha. Ku, re, ke, cho, kolo, eh, o, eh, ro, bo, la, ya, ya, ka, nse, ana, ka, ri. Mo, tu, ma, be, di, a, ipo, ta, ka, ta, na, ki, nse, ana, o, ni, ka, ki, na, o, na, ko, tumu, di, ma, ha, twa, le. Ke, ta, we, ki, eh, ko, pa. Si, ki, nse, wa, di, bu, le, si, ngasu, bu, le, si, bu, ti, bu, le, si, ngani. Ki, ra, bu, tu, ho, ba, na, na, lo, ya, ma, fa, na, ki. Il, Stephen, ki, eh. Si, ki, ni, ka, su, bo, le, la, ki, na, ko, bo, la, ta. Ki, veri, ki, le, mola, o. Tri, bile, Julia Mandela, ka, ba, mba, su, ba, le, wa, cha, ba, zimbi. Ke, kar, cha, le, te, am, o, ten. Ki, ne, ki, ba, re, ka, government, ndro, ki, paint, food. Ki, na, le, ba, na, ba, ten, on, school, o, mu, o, e, za, metric. O, mu, e, za, ten, ba, mballa, ha, 1.5. Ke, pa, la, lo, ko, ba, re, ka, na, di, se, pa. Bi, le, ah, na, no, ke, ba, si, ta, eh, za, ba, ri, ki, sa, me. Ki, mo, stressi, lo, ro, ba, la, ki, ro, ba, di. Ke, o, ko, pa, puso, in, tu, se. Or, na, ngaa, ba, re, ka, bi, anga, ne, ki, ba, re, ka, puso, che, le, te, ya, nja. Ke, le, ve, la, di, ta, o, mo, tu, o, be, re, ki, le, puso. Ha, o, ke, re, che, le, ta, mten, te, ki, kar, cha, le, ta, mten. Ha, ki, si, bo, ru, wa, eh, huti, le, ka, mko, ma. Ma, o, tu, a, ak, ha, o, e, za, ka, ma, ra, mba, su, ba, le, lungu, tu, a, ki, tri, bile, Julia Mandela, la, mfe. Ma, o, tu, a, 2009, 2008. Na, ka, bu, na, ka, re, ha, una, mo, tu, ha, ka, in, san, twa, le. Ke, pa, pa, si, wa, na, ka, eme, la, ndu, si. Ha, zo, ba, mku, bile, ba, cha, ba, ki, in, si, ta, ka, ki, ma, o, ho, na. Eh, ri, ki, bu, e, koi, ku, za, ke, ta, bu. Ya, re, ka, eh, 2011, ke, to, mo, na, mo, twa, le, ti, ki, ri, ku, la, ka, ba, mba, su, ba, la, va, a, o, ba, re, ka, mer, ko, ma. Eh, si, ki, si, le, si, mu. Ne, ki, o, ko, pa, fa, la, o, puso. Ni, e, za, ma, ta, pa, eto, a, le, ka, mo, cha, ba, zimbi, manis, palit. Ni, o, ba, ti, si, sa, ipa, ti, si, o, si. Ka, re, te, bu, ha, ko, bu, la, di, bu, le, si, nse, ke, bo, le, la, ka, puso, ra, be, ri. Li, ntsu, se, bu, ta, ta, bu, li, na, ki, ki, ro, ki, la, a, ka, ma, le, ma. Mo, south Africa. Ki, ale, bu.
Ki, Romela, di, tu, me, di, se, ta, ka, ba, di, tafle, in, cha, ba, ro, le, ba, ka. Baba, ju, ji, mop, il, eh, re, na. Ki, bile, ki, le, bu, ha, program director, ha, ile, a, bo, na, or, flomo, ka, ri. Baba, mba, ti, di, si, jo, ma, tu. Ki, di, ti, ki, ho, cha, mo, ka, la, bi, o, ke, re, na. Hu, di, re, a, an, ju, ali. Hu, di, re, a, an, ka, or, na, ki, si, ba, ki, ta, ka, mrao, a, ha, o. Fa, la, ki, bo, no, ro, ba, e, bu, ni, ki, ale, bu, ha. Eh, na, ki, twa, ki, me, med, di, wa, may, ha, wa. C P A. Eh, it, le, msi, cha, re, na, esali, di, si, ro, ka, ba, 95. Eh, o, fi, ta, la, le, hunu, le, har, si, be, hu, ru, di, re, a. Bi, alo, le, ho, na, claim, eh, ibe, it, claim, il, e, ki, ba, sa, di. Musho, wa, re, na, o, tu, a, o, be, a, msa, di, pe, il. He, ba, re, i, ka, ma, la, ma, kos, gas. Ma, le, bo, o, o, i. Re, veri, na, ha, na, orin. Na, koi, eh, o, le, o, o, eh, ma, kos, gasi, analisa, si, di, ra, ng. Ba, ta, o, le, ve, le, lo, a, ho, re, na. Ba, ho, na, na. Ri, le, ri, bu, chi, sa, ho, re, na. Ri, bu, chi, sa, ba, le, claims. Ho, re, na, mo, di, claim, si, in, te, di, di, ri, lu, eh, ni. Che, di, claim, il, e, ki, ba, sa, di, li, di, ra, jo, am, ba, ra, ha, re, ita, ni, eh, u, eh. Renar, re, le, ve, la, fe, la, di, claims. Ho, ro, claim, le, ma, ha, re, ita, ni. Bi, alo, ki, veri, ho, pe, la, orin. Bi, alo, ka, her, le, ba, sa, di, her, di, ri, le, se, lo. Ni, ke, eh, li, di, ru. Musho, ha, Romela, i, ki, ay. O, scrutinize, eh, di, lo, ndro, o, le, o, e, ita, na. Ba, bo, na, ho, re, na. Ba, sa, di, ba, de, il, e, ka, eh. He, ba, il, orin, ba, sa, di, ba, go, na. Ka, or, ba, ba, ni, ko, ni, sha, ba, ba, ni, sa, ba, sa, di, ba. Li, mon, tu, ni, o, le, o, e, di, ruang. Ha, ba, che, ke, ho, re, na, ba, sa, di, ba, tro, ko, me, lo, a. Ki, ho, pe, lo, cha, ba, na, di, jo, la, pe, il, na. Ki, ho, pe, lo, ya, re, na, ba, may, ha, wa. Ho, di, ma, ha, mo, o, i. Re, sa, ho, pe, la, ha, ba, ru, musho. Ho, heti, le, ba, tu. Bialo ka di loyara, musho opatela di loyara, horo loyara jola diya bereka, hoba hadibe reki, ha usana motwa ilongo cheka. Ha ona motwa abona ongo re loyara yela, ita haufa, tam meroko yo ufileing, kiale bu.
Window turns this side. Let's allow, let's allow the old men to, to, to address us. And then we will go to... At least he can't be doing an up and down at his age, so let's allow him to address and then we go to this mic.
Thank you, program director. Remtante, ore esesin, re neke mokhala, ke kachile batu lo enako okhala. Oze di silo taruna. Ledirile mulaoa hori, re claimi mafasi, eh, re claimi le mafasi. Mafasi aho ha twa are runa, ina adisivil seven zataluna. Ba batseya mafasi aruna, ba abone ha, orlela lenale di, di, di millennial kamutlasi, ba malewela kotoku. Ba, barko hedisa mafasi aruna. And lenale budget, ere maketsi maloga ere wakuaka eh, silote hori. He ba tuwa ba claimi le fasi, ba lusiwa ke ba tuwa basale claima. Musho nsa budgeteo, or ulufa ba tuwa, ba claimi le, heba winne le fasi le. Oba fachelete, ya horu ba ipatele ateni. Ba ba feyek, runa selere tomando 2008, re bakata bamocha. In the wombat area, anda wombas menispaliti. Halera tusika sepe, eh, mafasi ya runa, eh, ba wamba di ministera, bay khetela mafasi ya runa. Re retsabele koka ay. Redumele, tusere kopile in runa, revotes, erdira se, 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 selesiran, mo horo na yano. Rile rekopa, rekoba apartheid government, now we brought in a, a, a very huge apartheid government against blacks. Blacks against blacks, retsabele kai, retsabele kai. La, la le, le radira. Mele expecta, or le, le votele hap. This thing, we, we have got to correct it. Motomurla abuare, ha usupa motoka moloana, or skalibal, emeraro esupile we. Biano le, le, honaya nun, this morning se kredise, le, le supa mahosi ka, 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 kamenoa. Le levala remeraro esupa lo na. Lo na ke lo na lele hori, le, leze mahosi, leva direri seravan zalo na. Eh, yanu kore ki the acting chiefs, they tore the line. Hele wala lana silo lesa saluke la bohosi, ba nor trowela, eh, le, leisa kai. O, 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 banava nyane basola bohosi, babusola, babusola, babusola kancha lo. Mahosi must never belong to a political affiliation, must never be lower than politics, politics. You, 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 kor, lezer the whole system ya, eh, the western eh, eh type of government. Eh, 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 hatelalan, hofita, efile maburuwa, tata ya horu ar, ar piatele. Eh, yanu na le piatele la west, eh? Le, le losa leba tuwaro, I am the chief, but le losa leba tuwaro. A chief what is, hasa namudi politiking, ba na baile, ba ay, bo na ba ekai, eh? Le hatelaka di manispaliti, you, 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 you. Le, le roprasa kari manispaliti. He, two authorities in one place is wrong. Oze mulai, so serious, and it must be responded all mahosi, whether they are acting chiefs. Ba korele, oze na mori politi, mori politiking. Because ba, ba isava na dikolo, ba na ba leba tuwa kodikolo, habakre mebereko, koro ba na ke, ke buka ra, ke wora politiki. Halepateli mahosi, yanu mahosi ya, aselenka be waki di homeland state, ba, ba itwalese kahore, rea ya, arasuiteli be babu hosi. That thing I, I, down with it, with it. Down with it, it must never exceed any.
Then a nor konsele ele mo, kudu kudu, eh, motavenya land. Eh, especially because eh, after 22 years, Rusnoachtatina, this democracy of South Africa, eholore mi itlishte ho kumo watongava nchore, di lorita ba bed. So, eh, section 25, subsection eh, five of the constitution. It's very clear because, ebalala tajal government is sanji bere ke shape powers. Jolo rin inelijoo, na onete fajagore mu uwe la batu. Lead resources jolo rin government inelijoo. Mara today gare wala, government de aone le mo loren ya woncha hori, icherima we ya wushacha, oma hoshi obascha be. Le bakale oloko hori, batu barba hetangre ba isha musho. Ba under the pockets of those who are in charge of the land. Gare wala so, ono komuja schaaba, ya vanu kumani di shares, dena we la mrao. So, nanegiri, government de re na ay talipoli, CEO loren, muwatape lo muolo muwa ya parlamente. Aditleredi interest cha gaya kamo kajane lenjeon. Askaba involveduka radika issues cha, jolo rin di ama, di communities. Because bay tapelava varnavava hetamba. Gare wala so, baneli di plus, and ona nor motone, motuha nele plus. Le oko parlamente mbare, archemba wura isescha be, na nor plus ya gaya leonale eji, nenanoruto du man. Agasi du man. All these leaders in parliament, baneli fa. Eh, the speakers di wale jo, di farmers ke rinchecheva di tenne into lodges. And the lodges cheri wonan, di onu na ke ba tuwaro ba overseas onjuali, mara, koro bay tapelava navane di shares. Ki onava blocki lenta ba ya land. Ratonolo, relischaava, lele mahoshi arena, mara, butata wunema hoshi, ibile aworin rascha, wunela ba tuvarba hetan. Yanu one khopela hori, musho warena otaka mlaao, wa wala echa because eh, another leg of government, yolo rin inele matla, ke maspal. Yala musho otela mlaao, lolo rin wala echa hori, omele, just a minimum requirement to or motibe, eh, what can say? Kar musho arna hatama can say la rabatsi ba hori, abahonu gova, laba kasebulela ka ishua lande, kar maspalen. Yanu one. So, yanu one ke education, khopela re education ye, education ya re na ya onjuali. Air relevant to the current economic eh challenges chernimochon. Ministera muolo muwa education gaya, tauchancha karikulamiya education, or isutedi interest cha ga. So, khopela re ishua education, rechancha because this education, itana vali di graduate cheri chauspereke. Jolo rin di tono wula moga e, wa vali di credit diploma, wa bareka kai because qualification ne wurengai relevant to the economy. So, okay, thanks very much.
Eh. Kya, kyalu wumerisha eh, motante, ki wumerisha le schaava kamo. Na ken na, noa masala, getwa ke laka mo di molle. Banava shung, resweresello, selo ongo rekarana tushu. Samatomo, kina kawala kamo di molle, rubula ke le nyora. Mavuru, kawano ken, atunkri portova kampetimeti, ba tamile, ba tuwa mo di molle, kava sa weta meti, aweta kebo. Juale, savu be di, e kina kawala, banava shu, kava na bavare na ba protest, ba protestan, fist must fall. Heba na bavana, balo la di tuto cha ona, le remela maporisava ra ba tunji. Mo na elo goronale mavuru abala ya basoto, kavaro vali kotronko, kavaki sa oru banava na di troylet. Mara, banava bavare na go di tronko, maro vala, neto goronale ta ba hori, fist must fall. Khopela hori motante, le ba bujen kopa parlamente, mo ju magor, baro saro kola kana kame South Africa. Banava re na, bavare na ba nyaka di tuto, cha kwa go di mugo lual. Kawre, yanu one na wunela ka tomafita, oko police chana riki amakata lela kala qualification, ea echa kai. Gare riki amakata spetala lela kala qualification, baba echa ka, baba riki le koka. So, changa ba na wa ya kamo hoba, rutele yo kago, le skewela hetol. Enegelakase zewa, kamo di molle. Le cheri su kolosa, banava re na, ma credit arle, sebele kara kaseho. Le pala lela, lebiya mo di tavela, le mo di molle, banava ujuwa, bata suha ujuwa lebele su koloka, samakredit arka maraseho. Liagile ma chopi. Liagile di ntojilia, egno wa marupi fela, banava fe ta kama rupi, ba kati ona kama rupi, le, le ri mea wala kari apsa kari mama, ya regishiu. Ke nengi duti ma ha usuwa na ba school. Andali, sesewa motante, ke hori. Le, le, le gana ufa ba tu settlement. Niwa ke tjerin chimo ma kesin ngare, namo, manika beni tava ra ba berna basama, rulene ba biya mona ba pakavo, tva rulamol. So, ba tuva nchi ba re ipela ba tuwa namo suhemo. Saka sa ngela tja ba tuwa leba settlementa, mo di huhen, hori moa ba berna mo ma kesin, rosekeba ba aldiho, le gana kama ba la, alenfematu. Sesewa apke kina gangosu wala, ke hori, le tuxen, kom musho. Re tuva ba tuva nchi ba tuan, kawanke musho la kakuabu, lerinke bua ra. Banali pasata kama ba berna, banali di aritpi leba re, ota juan. Re nyaka wai, tuva ta be hori, ota juan, banu tiri pasata kama ba berna, le ba gali di aritpi. Juale, yanu one apke kina kago, tuva hori. Banava bavare na, kona le baba wula kwa mi kukuna, banava me tagas, ma gula kasi kalati kama runa, shopen wala muwa li gula na me tagas, wa banava baba basama tagas. Ba swaga di kara se, ba swaga di parafe. Ba swaga di kara se, ba swaga di parafe, kala na ta ba lebo, mara le lokalete ma gula me tagas, re nyaka oru pele ya ma South Africa. Kiale bu.
Musara marapo, a panel, chaba, kakaka rejo, mo di muku. Na kuma di mecha ma voya otoa galiha. Silo sakka, ki, di ceela, ne eti, ne tagasi, ki di pemu tsa kua galiha. Ngani kwe di pemu, di pemu tsa kogor, refaba sumushum, eri faba sumushumo. Baya chelet, heba ya chelet, rea ba swarihi, wa sanji ra ba swarihi ba tuva, raska ba swarihi ba tuva, ba jilenchelet zako diya la di tzele. Ri, ba femushum, wa busha chelet ze yela, wa busha chelet ze la hori, di tzele lo jaba, di hona kujala pele, kar, karu ba swara, chelet ze la isaboue. Di tzele lo alisale, secha basu lo alimush, po chatabu ma, honale ma, honale mush. Ba tuva le ba ya chelet ze, abu sha chelet ze la ya musho, ho di tzele lo di hona kujala pe. Sa bu be di, mantona arena, anyaka tujre etenileching, otoa musho. Ar leken gor, leken gor, re rujen mantona arena, tujre etenileching, ya wecha pele jua manet. Ntoe te kama ka di di, hor di diere kamo hua nu di ska ba cha ba chona. Po chatra, arri, arri shale ba tu mrao, gerba fili meroko, kuruma kobe li xere, please. Ar leken gor, re shale mrao, gerba fili motuwa, adieselo, rema shale mrao, re chelet ze iskata ya lo bela mrao. Itsebe kobe la mrao, musho iskaba ya lo ba, scha basa lo alimusho, osasara shupa ba tuva, ba tuka menona, kana kobe ba chiba lelo alimusho, kiale bu.
Eh, tobe la, kimi cha panel kama kaya musho, ba teleji kama kawa le, kamo ora monye. Kamka gayo na, na ken na, teke mte tuwa le doava, ki mese schaaba sa, hoshi SM, le doava di sist, rangi di kitla na, uasitengakoko fechiho. Le bakalakule, tlenka lo na mo, ke le bakala claim, ye yenge ya claimaka 1998, noronjuale asichu weli, ntlali tito, moro yo na. Ibele, na renkabelo musho ona kabuona, ubareka na, ubo kasu ho le. Because asingi ki woni le hua lele patelang, mushumi pele ashuma, tualeka musho abore na. Claim ye le mfa, itlemi le, rutlemi le dinaga, te di sanan lebo eh, mokopani kamka gayo na, bo eh, eh, Percy Five. Moru venku na ma, matebele, agama rava, kamka gayo na, under hoshi creating di kitla na. Ona juale, awo tsebe horu sanji wudire juan, aona title di eti le, le ona, bavala horu, title di sanji tja kari number, kuvoncha hori. Each and every premier oha bilen kamo limpopo, mo di narin te di le mfa, kaba kala claime sa honungu twa. Bo ra di premier teo, banali dinaga, te di ba, ba ikavetin chona, te di claimi le, tualepa la wela mrao. Another thing, claim eh, claimi le ona yenge ya armut, under mine, wa pipirast, platinum. Ore kilen le fase, leli claimi le, tuale, ta kli, ay honungu twa, pasatiwa beile ba tu fao, kri ring, kawali escom, idirile, idirile eh, power station ona fao, ho di wonon ona. That's why claim is a chikapila, bali kilen kuiisha, ho claim, Kotkorambek, baro nyaka la loyara. Hakizmo na, musho hori claima, onyaka, sanji onyaka loyara, we ipatele before tla ho chala, ona uska claimo kara, ona chala daopatela loyara. Another thing, renkabe musho ubareka na, exa weli ta ukasu ho le, kaba kala hori. Di ceela, te sanji ndidi we skontiri, mona yenge abore na, ti wulela, reni fe di choopat, ho di askontiri, mara suho na, chelet e ti le, etenka di poten chawa ni. Savu be di rapen, odu muka nka yeu, mo moting, arosana motuwa na le kuebo, kuru bava be chandi shobo, di tjeriki, ba tu ma chuan, te kama kala bo na, kaba kala hori. Banali lae niya ona tseba hori, ra hona ufe ta mo, oma can say la, oka hona kumana, pleke adira shobo, ona fao, oru echa di ritvachi. Kaba kala, onu le uka lelele, ba tuwa di, mo narin na ona, ba la kava la hori, ba na ba sa va techa, kava cha le di, la di ritvachi di drat. Cha di reksho ona fao, hele wa bu tja, derdiareki shwa, ba ra na mra, wa na ucha moka, musho uhonungu inch. Rapen footi, ya ma fellelo, na kuwa faska sfatelo, odu muka mpato uchoa, wa wupi cha washima, ne kaba kala hori. Musho usinche, siriti sa vana, kaku sentcha. Batu ba rimba ba gidhe ka komi, kaba kala hori, koma, aisal, aisal alisiriti. Ake honungu, renkabe lo, neti eh, hati ya rat, ona longa nova atla, atla suba nyaa opa kawre, re na, asingi rupi na opa, onu wa de na ko ma rechi, ngasa, ngasa wa mu di kana.
Thank you.
Ki, 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 ki la pi de, thank you, kiale bu.
Thank you. Number five. Number five.
Eh, trowela schaaba kama kala na, kisa levalo wumerisa, meme di ora no mo olu, oro pestin daranachalmo motante. Po chatra, yobo golo golo, yobo tjuangwe roke mo kiviyo. Government de re na, ya mitengi ala kuno ya ANC. Iwalaile di ambax school, kamka jona, ya didira di FET colleges. The FET colleges te li lidirile. Banava re na, hava hunu koya mi ksuma because hava, hava hi ray. Yanu one na, aru onyaka meroko, baro ba nyaka experience, experiencing ona otegiaka asna exposure. So, it's a big problem, renale ba na kwa ha, ya ba tuwa di FET, ba tuwa lema walo, ba veleka di shelfun, hava hunu hero. Ke kaba kala ye ngile walaile di ambax school, kaba kala wa, kole di, ona ha ba ejo mo, oba aru uchoa, ayawe reka. Na asengu ona ha ejo, he sanji remo fe pa, njeleka na le re na, he sanji remo rega diya paraja, ulu ro fe ta ja re na. Point number two. Tanaku e fitileng, isengoro leli we di sa sepleboz, eri di seplaka no mha no mar, ona le tawe ngus. Tanakwe fitlen, isengore luwele di sesi plewo zeri, di seplaga no kwa no mar, ona le trobe ngusi. Eh, putabiange, ore re na, re le wa tuwa banusu. Re gi, re luwesane, o giya maldulo awa tuva, wa ba fawale, nte le kudi o, koya ni te ya tava orna, chava li seplabiange. For example, eh, le file wa tuva cha teka maldulo, ai le wuri lea, che ama ngo kia di thakon. Gona ya le huwi ma, hera regula lalele na le re, herele file mutu plasa, eh, le file maldulo, hao sa na kamu kolo kamu jeela na kahon. Mka le kona omofa ma repala ku mu jeela, hao se ya kas kona ha le mtiyaro, o file mutu slo sesi ra mo pa le gus je. Ta we mu walo, gona kuhore, ma kua ha ba aritjeela ba tuwa wore na di na ha. Eva se ba pati si si, kuru mu shula, o wosa pati ba, ba tuwa wore na chellete. Eva yo ujo orno, eh, Slavi, here is your bass, o sunjoo mu chelech. Hosi ya doni jali ulelan, uya ukuba, ha ukuba uya ka plasi ni la te la, ho fita kamo lo ona hos. And how iya koko, yo kuru o sunjora au fe permit ya le koma juha au. Ha sunjora au fe permit ya kona chawa, wela ka koko ujo orno, kamohwa iita, o talo koma jeka. And le koma jeve, enka juan kakuwa, iraka ke lo kua le uwa, uwa ni, udlulala le bo. Waena ha ike tele praise, praise iwe ya ke lo kua le. So, that was totally wrong, but that thing is still exercised even today. Gona putabiange, mister Halomamutlanti, hori, wa tuwa ha wa wa we reka ni mu shu. Gar, wa we reka mo ba si na di plasa, gona bialu, ke buona ba re ba re, ilu parla yoke kolo ka, ba shumisa di plasa ya re na ka wante. Ake tuwa re na tuwa e wale na liya iziwa na, ore wa tuwa lena, ba shumisa, ba wa we reka mu shu, ba shumisa di plasa ya wa tuwa ba woi. Enne re na kama muria di niaka, li di tswe re, li di juile, hara buju. Kiala bo.
Thank you. Number six.
Eh, tobe la.
Number six.
Kiti me di sha mo president wa re na, ne panel ye irenghona mopelka re na, le se chava kakaka rechu. Ye abulela ngi ke mueli muela, ki tuwa ho, kolofan maila traditional cancer. Mo ku ba na be shu nakrato bulela ka rural development plan. Ya, re kaka bulela ka rural development, eh, ba tuka mo kaba bareni mo koko di rural areas. Kanakuela ya ma buru, kisi chava sesi len sa la shua, iri di tswe. Ya lo re tswe ni cheku ka di so ka di direlo asiluni. Government wa re na since acheri mu shu, ka ninety four. Li enau sa fosi pilamoli na ne konglela, lakhateluiela ya kodi rural areas, ba si ke ba di bona ka siluni. Ya lo re ba na be shu ke bole di shwa kahore, na ke tuwa, kache shu ke kalulu. Eh, zila ya kuya kalulu, kawi ya kalulu, kahu na zila et all. Me ngwa he kamo, kama rabatuba, kamo la di thabeng chela cha lulu, kahu ta di voti ba ya vota anytime. Kahu na na kuiye ku ba sa voti inka yo na. Ya lo re tiya ziba, kore ene development, kawi bulela kaya na kua government ki ntwetaata. Government aha na di chelleti cheka ka au, cha kore ene aha, kachele pa re na ene, kota developa di rural areas chiku ni. Ba ti na, kahu bona tswe nyeh, kuyeri ruje ngomoku di rural areas, ki juile. Kayaka zoma, borra di chelleti di investors, di investors cheki di creile, chedi tumete ngi kore. Eh, limpopo leka bu paraleku, ba kali berekeela, kuku, ba ba boni neti di ITPs, cha maspala, ta ye muwe, li muwe, wa mo limpopo. Ya lo re ho koko di ra kama zapa, a kore president wa re na, uichi ene borra di chelleti, kavati ba tametu kua government, ba kachele pa ni government. Ya lo re na ke di rimata pa ki juile, ki di creile di developas, ho ku asimutaini ki tereshu. Ya lo re koko pena government, hor ana oto dumela, kore ene di investors chiku ki di creile. Neti kopani, neto na ni na di, ni na ezee government. Nda ne re, ni bole di shani, kha ino kore ene niya di kui shisha, kha di ti re, eh, representa koli na. Nda ne re, ner dumela leni, kore di investors chiku di zeni, di shabu lili bualeku ka bu par. Ya lo re beki tu ma, kore kaki tuha mo kha ino kore niya kui shisha, neto kun na neto krea eh, di email chaaka, neti contact chaaka. Le na ke cre di email cha li na, neti contact cha li na, kore kaki tu ma, kore ribule di shani katawa yeku, ki a koma, ki alebo.
Thank you. We note hands this side, number one. There's a mic at the back. Gonalimai komra.
Yeah.
Number one, gonalim.
Lama thomo, koko pena wore.
No, in a meeting we raise a hand, we don't just stand, please. There's number one who's being noted here. There's number one who's being noted, who should go to the mic. And then, you are number two. Number three, meh? Black set, number four, no, we're taking that side. Number five. Number six, threats. So, those are the six speakers for this side, and then we come back and note this side. Unfortunately, we don't note in the two, we note in the benches. Otherwise, it might as be that a person stands and go to the two. I think just for control purposes, let's please, do it that way. Can the two marshals make sure that we have those six people there, and then we start with number one? Number one.
Eh, kiala bo. Moronal noise, I'm not protected. Eh. Re, ki Joseph Matlasela ki tuwa, kuba cha kaba mta bo traditional cancer. Kuta kala la biangorras. Ki Joseph Matlasela ki tuwa, kuba cha kaba mta bo traditional cancer. Ta ba tava, ndulas dulo walijaji. Aru kupo len, re, la ma tomu, re ya di hetungta, za mu shora na, le re, da tompa ma xoji. Ota sulu defes ralia haye, han debele kame shanga. Ure ma xoji aga suka be di slave, ono juate ma xoji afetu kere di slave, di raba stem, za oru, ralukisha kuma spala, kaba naga kofi chela la di peto za bo. Nga li di claim te di inchi sa di plasa, zamcha ba re di claim ilie. Eh, nar fita go commission ba u expire ri, kutuwa la commission enwe, li ona iri expire ri. Ma re tama ile ilu desi chellete kadi poti. Di plasa te re di niaka, li pleke te, ono juate go N seventy, seventy one kuya kua mori. Nga li di plasa tarina te di okupaitile ki ba tuva ba woi, eh, ebele ba, ba di si niya, mori niya kobe ya di investors tarina. Ntweri, eri, eri submitting today. Nga demtante, lebelela lewe na mo tuanga, ha bo lena, ay, ba ri ching, ya di malo ping, la bo lo ona, sing kabur. Ma xoji re tswe ki stresi, iwile re kuela ziling, re kope la, re sepi sho kore, hosi le chelita di loe arre. Aonawu mo ta fita kona ri chika, bo rambe, kodi obising, ri niaka, kore ba ri fe di na katarina. Di na katarina te ri ri niaka di plasa tarina, di over twenty eight. Mara di plasa te we, adi hono fita koma bu amta, di okupaitile ki ba tuwa sa ba zibing, ba ba ri pa fi le ki ba tuwa ba woi. Per kope la kore ono juate, before ya di hetung, re sepi sen, tuana li, le, 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 pi, le nar tuman mu shu. Kore, ma xoji ki tebe ama tomu le to yuka, tebe abra, itava di premier li di, li di canceras. Re, re, re na, re, arin ya go, u, u sufa, sufa na li le na kaminona, li yangore siriti sa ma xoji. Si bu yele mara, kore, le le na kore, le ve di politi shen, le komi le ke ma xoji ka fasadi tar, sing kadi obising, ve di si ona, ma burali ki timisha. Bo ra kulu kugo, buutibari na ba kesi ziling, banya kalfasi, we need our land back soon as possible. Not by, by commission, la pi sheki di commission, za mo limpopo, kutana premier oto ma commission, kutana premier oto ma commission. Ela ba tama ba tu ri di million, eri na, rulala ba di, ngu yo ba na trai ba na bori na, iko ka di dulu, mebe leka tu xala re fa di dulu ra ba ba. Kiala bo.
Thank you.
Eh, chape senwalijaji. Eh, panel le weza pele, ki woi chori, the former deputy president Halomamutlanti, se chava kakaka rechu, ba tu tuwa kali limpopo ika re tobe. Juale di tava riya, thoma. Lama thomo, ki opula kore, ki kope la, o woi cha weza pele kore, kune mo, re sente ngo na tava i. Re ne kore, re re chia di decision, re di chi, nte lugu, me ma se chava, se chava, se le paten, parcel. Ya di shi ni ta ve ri chaka ri ya ma se chava, mo tala, demarcation. Ta ba ya demarcation lugu, naga di shi lele tri, le lugu kaba parliamente, lele bech, yo ya ma di chava, kuwa, kuwa mara in. Lugu, what happened, ne kaka bo fuan, because you take the decision alone, your government, without including the community. You must include the community when you take this kind of decision, there must be part and parcel of that demarcation. Eh, critical example is this one. Re kala belela, today, poluwa, unless we speak, imi di che ma tala, ya mecha ma sheshan, ya mecha le mu leji, kare baba la ya ma spalo, e ba ki aranang. Ba tu di ma mu tal ba sogola, ba sogola le, leka njuale, ya ose wa liya, greater, ya ono greater zela, eh? Ma, because, poluwa njuale kala ba inya ka, e lugu ina di election cha lokal, ba cha ba mto bo we, ba ta ta, ba i loser. Ba kusha kaba ka blam ma spala wa aranang, ba i diya njuale tri, poluwa nita we, today vela ba we ne, is good, ba they forget about it, ba shumi. Ba shumi ba tuwa ba la aranang, le ma mu kere bo la kaya na, ba sao la chelete, na ila, ya ga aranang, ma ba la ka poluwa nimo despight. What that means to you, is leadership. We have to protect those workers. Because, as we speak by the moment, as we speak, as we speak by the moment, ki no mu wabo, noa victim. Ki be, ki shuma aranang, ki be ki shuma aranang, e lugu wa yu wala ile, ba tu diwa ba kumana isevi, tiwa kaba khausiu, ma mu talu tiwa kama poluwa. Ki manya mi vela kuwa mara in, wa niwa, koro kibo ta, ba tu ta kala ba vu, koro ta ta play kiva ta. Kao re demarcation board, ilere ja di shi, ye ya obula, eh, aranang municipality, ba re, ba i diya njuale tri, le poluwa ni municipality. Bo bana baba le meji ba tu diwa, rual area, because they le ba, le ba kupo la kana kadi election. From there, then you go, you forget about, about, about our community. Today, you, 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 you won the election, but what about the workers? Because, we have heard that, they said that, those are, those are working at aranang, former aranang, if you kala kola tu bob, utuwa, utuwa fita kama poluwa. Ano kola tu bob, what that means? Because they get what, what, what they want, ba kumana njuale kala ba inya ka, re koba lare, eh, leadership. Tamal, luksha tava cha cha demarcation board, ba, ba ve reki ba ba aranang, ba lo le kila kama poluwa, abba leka ncha ka chelete, le ba, le ba, le ba ve reki, ba ka poluwa ani. Kar, mergo ri ya mergo kwa osoana play kiku.
Thank you, thank you very much. Number three.
No, no, no.
You can write it down and submit it at the back, we will read it.
I got one minute remain, Jefferson, please, let me.
Number three, please, on that side.
How?
Thank you very much.
Kiala bo, mudila studo walijaji, panel eh, di len kamo, koto di shana le re na, ba bo luka ani, kadi lo jarina. Ra ba le tuwa ono lugu, kar kona wite kulele. Mudila studo, no, 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 ta ta, kau lo moti no amban kueni. Di, kono re di saje luru di duji, kadi na ba duji kama gari, edi toje di luru kadi na ba duji kama gari. Bana baborina, ba yu koe la di rete fa ji kaga ra kajo na, deri si ne chia bo kamo so we avu aswa barina. Re kope la kaba wore, di demarcation je di bolela kajo na, diar ta ka ta ka incha. Kau lo re ya di hetun. Ba he uko le ba na, swara wi ma kabo na, ho, kona, kere, re ba ta si chawa, ba sunjera ba seplabe, na ba kui shishi, ba sele ja ba ngadi le ba ra sa di hetun. Demarcation diar ta ka ta ka incha, kara ni si ya kaborina. Sesiwa lo, re kope la ga ba duji, ba ba sa duji ngaga ra di itsa, la muleneng rea shua. Motwa amban kueni, koro ta ka ta ka na, na biale, ho duji kamo ki, ma spala, koe le kamo next way ya okega, xishi man man, koe ta ka ta ka moti na, kore na, rea, rea lebo.
Greetings to honorable Matlanti, all protocol observed. Uh, my name is Buittumelo Maguela, I'm coming from Mutimula in Watab district. Uh, I think the whole house will agree with me if I could say that art and culture is based in Limpopo. Limpopo is where art is, but it becomes a challenge to us as artists. Because we don't get any recognition from the national level. A practical example, you will find out that when we have an event in Limpopo. They will call Winimashaba all the way from Joabek to come and perform here only one song, and go back to Johannesburg. But whereby, in Limpopo, we've got artists those who can perform better than Winimashaba. Uh, another example that I like to indicate, that support my statement when I say art is based in Limpopo. Right now, we have produced DJ Monada, even in Johannesburg, in Cape Town, they are playing Monada of Fisher Kamad. But they don't even have a gratitude to give us an opportunity, to give us funding in the nation, in, 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 in NEC, National Art Council. The only prioritize that they give, it is only the people from outside. That the people, those who are getting funding from the NEC, from National Law Title Fall, all the funding stakeholders. They are only recognizing the people from outside, from the national, from Joabek. So my plea to you, my honorable leader, it is that, please, deliver the message for us. At the national, when you are sitting, please recognize Limpopo. It does not mean that when we are down, we don't need what is up there. All of us, we really need it so that we can be able to achieve our goals as young people. Some of us as artists, the art that we living is bread and butter to us, it is something that we breathe, it's something that we eat. If I can raise my voice and sing, many people can be healed, many people can be able to receive the other thing that they did not have. In other way, I'm trying to say, it is our voice, it is spiritual upliftment to those who don't have, I thank you.
With the remaining minute, can you sing one verse? Buittumelo, with your remaining minute, can you sing one verse so that we hear?
Je so ka, stebe libili, se di la, ti cha aba, oho, so, katsola, isi, isi ra e.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Tuvi.
Kiala bo, kara ta obi medichava tu kama koe ya kachati. Kena mankuwa, ma suin ya, kotoa la kama kueni, gona kama fas, fas le sa kepricon. Ya ma thoma kara ta ulala kaya na, ki tu tu. Me, ler merisa zana school, le, le ra sepi sho kore, ba tuwa ulaya certificate se la sahali. So that kore, bana baba niya ne e ba gola, ma teacher kama school, mbata wana wanaraluka koro, oraluke la, tu go in efe. Kora apa len, ba kona kua bajea baba placee koro. Apparently, adi diwi school ndu leche uwe, wana, abba, abba mto komel koro. Wana ra luka so, orata oraluka kadu koloi, orata ulukish, o naga diang, wana ka school ngwatin, ayestra ten, ayah we jiniya opa. Ah we jing, biaka mtswe, uki timu uye ma social working, o ta oru lele kataba yewu. Yet ma social workarna, adi melo, adi merako, I'm sorry, abadi consultation, abai school, mbai chaka performance, e wana. Ava di consultation, ava is schoolo, ba yu cheka performance, ya waana gore. Waana overaka biang, rekamuncha kamaramisha kay. Waana vela jasa honu goru waala, ralesavana. Motwadu tohala, waana wa hala, waana omisha police station, ba mi waaga, aga tswaro. Ma social worker ava berek, waana ogola until R eighteen years. Then baje, banabar na ba ba tswalele. Banabar na, wanale di atjoru. Ba ka, uluki shadi, loche di zenje di zenje, marayet, uka niaga kame triguola ba limbari. Ba uvolaya, ba totswaro, waana fasiba mtswaguru, oniagay. And then ra wela la rea, kagarakrai. Niopene reki shuwa. Ba, best community, retsaya uwe, luisha. Ba twarla loana, ba, ba reki she, ba di, ba ridutibachi. Ba twarshi ba tuvad. Er fita magistrate or niopake. Twangi issue la board. Yet ra wana or niopé, i busy, is niya scharba saborena. Banava fejadi pato kadinu. Ba reka niopé, ye ne we magistrate jarwo, cha ngore, niya na ya gar. Ay honu goru pruega. Yet kika vela garare, kaba president, duileka, ka eba ilolu shata bayan niopé. Otata bayadi magistrate jarwo, namu fasike. And then ra wela ota bayan naida. Na muhola wana naida kagarascharba saborna, agu one. Just because, banava, ki hola ba tupa bayitse. The more kama garagadi branchi di, di watin, ulola di position. Ba twalala taba gore, ba tswaradi position, so that waana bo tswaradi tender. So, kidume la na lta bayan, pume la ngabala gore. You the Ife shue kagaradi tendera, ba so ardi endi corporatives. Chelate, ye ne warfanyo na ya sasa reva sad. Arakakan chelate, uka lemi cha ina lidigarat. Ardi endi corporatives. Melo godu, obuleti gua goru mbadiang. Ardi endi corporatives, ba twaba hona uka jedi, loche moru na. Ba ba reki she, and. Ropela, rapa, rapa, ri endi corporativesin. Ropala, riska, humana, motwa idjo province, ye unguwa, hola hola. Tabaya di buka mo di kolom, ba di kolo, di buka di fitika, bela di kolo. You find that uka rutisha ba tupa ba ngwe, aragani, kaba berin. Ma ramutwado province, ye hola hola, da tsoi di buka, di lajala uka fitali impopo. Kalimpopo arna ba twa ilorba, ka hona uka chi cha di buka che uwe na. Aropela ngkataba ya na. Kama mkueni. Di rapa, ba li na, ba yu fili maspal. Mahoshi asaswe rin na. Mahoshi afika, arri pa na, ufitaleka di rapeng, robolu kakay. Ba twamdimu, onale tabaya sasa. Rinale ba tsoi di ba ilu gore, aba hona uka wela. Aba honu goru, weta chelate ya wan. So marabar, onale di food parcels, just us. Di ajo, ardi zewor di vela laka. Onale chelate ya ya wan, cha support grant. Waana motu, oh humana, trandra ten something. Banava ilu goru, ba ki di foster, ba ba fa nine hundred and something. On top of that, oh humana, wanava ilu gore, ki foster, marasur familiar one. Isokona that much. Then how about, banava ilorba, humana, cha tage granti. Ba lele familiya ona, risokona biang, then ba ba tushelka di food parcels, galavu.
Thank you. Number six.
Thovela. Kidume di she, panele, wa yakama ya ma, na kamu kaga yu. Abulela mo, ki fitama kfuuku, kotwa ama shani. Eh, issue ya ma thoma, ki kubulela ngayo, na ki, tabaye mentioni, niya, di levy. Code traditional authorities. Eh, 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 rivile ra, ra lanchana leo, na tabaye kuya di levy. Ba twaba ba twar, er es, spikase sfiti lenso, wanchi che gore, tabaye uwe, aimala uwe. Ropela gore. Eh, comrade, Halima Matlante, our, our former president. Level land tabaye kuya di levy, code, eh, di, di, di tribal authorities. The issue of levy, it's a, it's a burning issue in the rural area. Eh, the other thing is, is about the title deed. We, we, the people that are staying in the rural areas, we are not having title deed. Hence, we cannot make any loans. As far as the banking loans is, is concerned. Eh, and those loans, kijuanajekor tushango, elevator, poverty and unemployment. Because with that, er kumana le, le fasi, we will create jobs, we will make projects and help the community at large. Eh, the other thing is, the accountability and monetary. Er kopa la gore, all those projects that are done, it seems as if they are not monitored. As we speak, onale, selai, toka momentu no, wa yakine, Diana Clinic, it's a mess. Ena only two years. Ki na linaja ore, the present moment, they are still holding the retention fee. Eh, yeah, about that, selai, selai, eh, it's a mess. Yeah, goru la, as we speak, ito trora, momo, ito trora, ya strelis, abas kontiri, ya ba ma. The other thing, ki tabaya, selai ya, between Mukopani and Macheshani, it's about fifteen kilometers. Eh, the premier in the year twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen. Utlle, eh, not twenty, twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, utlela Macheshani. Abulela kaya ona, and our promise ago. Before ya local government election, would be having that. And, eke opola ka twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen IDP, it was there. Eboncha gore, ito diwa, and allocated a budget. As we speak, aina le, aina, aina skontiri, isaleka ira mwanu. Eke kulela kataba, monitoring, can you just go and check or na where that money goes? That money that was budgeted. Because once you budget, or are meaning you are heavy man. Can you check or where is that money went? Is kavani, leka di potenjavo, Mr. Matlo. Eh, the other thing, ki tabaya, eh, di mayti. Ke tchoba boro, ko, ko, ko di village in jagua, Macheshani, as we speak, onale, village ye, rebolela. Service mo, service delivery more one, is lakza. Since, what from you are local government, the only thing, ba ba ilenyo ona, ki the first stage ya, the RDP. From there, asinko obele, any service delivery. Mayti, rebolela, as we speak now. Last year, ne ba ba ucha kawakala drought, or no, awo na drought, mayti ko fasi, ah on. But, anyway, the problem is still the same. Ava na mayti, ba twana uwe. And the neighboring village, the project diu ela, waana kame di gararuka ane. Er kopa la gore, that thing, i monetary we, illebelele.
Okay, yeah, can I just wrap up? Eh, ki, 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 issue is, as ya mayti, and, ba twa one, ka ba, ah, 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 faili, ka ba kala mayti. Without water, we cannot leave. Thank you very much, thank you, thank you. We can reinstate the mic.
Agitameka, odume di sha. Ki, mwe me diwa, motiwa. Masagani. Forcefully removed from Masagani in nineteen sixty-eight to a place called, eh. Motetema. A well-known place called Motetema. Right now. Agitameka gore. Read the application. Ya ore, motwa rin na, more, ritu willan, waana forcefully. Ritu shaka, musho aparte, tu wage. And indeed, in nineteen sixteen, I mean in nineteen, what is it? Eh, that date again. No, 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 I'll, I'll call you, I'll tell you. I've written down here. In two, two hundred and five. The former minister, Dida, celebrated this issue with us. Now. We were removed. Ritu shichi puaga, ba kalelela tela, o. La ore, rehausu, leba bashiu. And that was not the truth. Therefore, at the moment, we are at Motetema. Bring at Motetema. Rile ra kopa la. Eh, minister. Eh, wa, 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 Barginkini. We met him with his group here in Pili's back. Together with the minister, eh, eh, eh. Eh, come on, eh. What, what's that? Orad, orad. Orad, orad, orad. Eh, Orad.
No, no, no.
With the, with the, with the minister. Eh, minister, minister, Kinidi. I must, right? Listen, listen, okay, okay, okay. Na, go, na, go. And then, together with his group, they promised to come back. And at the moment, we are still waiting for them. Therefore, we feel the government must help us. Presently, we have moved from Masagani. What is happening there? The people, the workers of municipality, they are making money out of that place. They've, they've built their houses and renting there.
Hello everyone, ladies and gentlemen. Honorable Mr. Halima Matlante. And the panel in front of us. Eh, firstly, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity, program director. My name is Patricia. Haman is my surname. I'm from Deaf Federation of South African Limpopo Province. I'm the provincial director. As you can see, I'm deaf, I'm using South African sign language to communicate. And the verse you are listening to is our South African sign language interpreter. So. I'd like to express my concern regarding the deaf community in Limpopo province. Our biggest and greatest concern is the poverty facing the deaf community. Why, I'm sure some of you are aware that our deaf children, our deaf youth, women and men. Are suffering what they do to the lack of education. The education is there, yes, but the issue is communication. Our education system doesn't support our deaf community. That's why they suffer, that's why they are home doing nothing. The education itself, inside, in deeply, the system. So, we kindly request the government, Mr. Halima Matlante. Please review this issue. Don't ignore, why? Because, you know, merit is very important. Now, I think, eh. Deaf, a lot of deaf people feel merit, why? Because of the education system, it doesn't support them. So please review this issue, why? Because it's really painful to us. Yes. Yes, the policies are there, but review it, please. Because you know, you have, eh, 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 age problem. If you reach a certain age, then you won't be able to continue with your high school. Which is why most of our deaf people don't understand, can't read totally, can't follow their education. Why? Because age doesn't allow them. So if you change them away, if you expect them, if you close doors on them, what do you expect them? What do you expect them to do? So please, government, I plead with you, review this issue before taking a decision. Eh, oche, sangana schoolo, please review this thing. We also need accessibility. Again, point number two. For us to solve this issue, we've been struggling to get land. We request land so that we can have an abbott center. For those who couldn't further their achievement, for those who couldn't go to universities, colleges. I believe an abbott center will be a door opener to us. So that we also have a better future, they can go to an abbott center to further their, their education. Now, it's a challenge for one, as a deaf person, to be enrolled in a TV college. Why? Because, you know, communication is a challenge. Why? Because, eh, we use South African sign language, like it or not, it is our language. But we be told that we cannot afford an interpreter, who's going to pay the person? Yes, we understand that, we do also have rights. We do want to see ourselves enjoying life. Out there, other provinces, people are enjoying their right. They are going to schools. But in Limpopo, doors are always closed, no accessibility, all we get is residence. We are patient, yes, but we are having a very, very bad life. We are not enjoying, we don't like the, 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 the way we are living. Indeed, education is very important, like it or not, there is no life without education. So please review the policies so that we can all have a better life. We can all have a better future. So, look at other provinces. And we have a lot of deaf people working in other province, but Limpopo can go at any shop, department, just two or three. But other provinces, I'm telling you, Limpopo, you are the worst. You are dead. So please assist us with accessibility, a budget for interpreters as well, a budget for sign language training. That's my concern, thank you very much, Mr. Patricia.
Thank you. Please, please, she must record the details at the back as well. Her name and conduct. Can the marshals help us get her names and conduct, please? Thank you very much.
Eh, eh, thovela, kidume di shanisokamoka. Eh, libichada ka ki na makanretumulo, mukichamukopani.
Eh, galizunajisha. Ba, ba etapilevaru na musho. Sechabaka muwa, kaga kareju. Ena ki, limopofani, aufo. Hetoa, tuwazi, ratfoti. Ki tabalela, yala kilina, rapa yu, petana. Kirat, kir. Suba giroba, eh, kaga raga yu po vitari na. Ki na linaja, level gilbar, a business laba, karanasaba. Say, eh, the government, ben bibi es. Eh, men darame, pedusha naleri na.
Kala abshawa kiri kisarika. Kuswadi ar al al matala. Eh, basi kwa wale kikuripaka wosi, kiri yote me wale. Lele nare awuwa. Re fete la orle ba fenaata, aor ba fena oto la pele ba wusi. Kiri ya ka wale la ta ito le mule ore. Le layo leka wa ota pele ba re, la re fete la orle. Meri yote le, bili bestas. Orre fena ova le lewolo ka amatala, bili ma ele. Le, kiri no kama ta kele ore, bili ya wote ya kasa otsu kono le. Eh, kia mo ta de ya biciela. Pa, suti fute yote kiti mo presidio yote kona diya tal. Kuti leka aflanachile, atala go ota ka ito le, oka la ba ka la orle ya osepele. Ah, fita ar vitlega le ota ka iti la keni lewa amatala. Wali lele ri bichar, risha go oteri, orispori di lele di preseti pli. Kalaka ale iyeri, me ota ka ti la keni ya re, dey di iti lele to tui tuti. Fifteen, twenty, sixty. Efi tja lela ka yene ore, ike oti alimile. Kiri ya ka olo tia orle, iti tava, iti tja maysheli tia orle, oka lele tal. Kita ita asia ta na. Kiri lele yene muzi kaka ta re, ori bisu bichala me ota ka amatala. Kefra ba amatala, kiri ya lepa la mele yene ya lewe, or ya lepa la mele. Lele lewa ko pa la mele yene, fete la orle biciya kaka ta re. Ta oya kome presidio yene, ra fena orbe ya la biciela. Va leba re la lepa la go ya di ko le, pa pa, omara lepa la go ya di tudi leki. Pa pa la di di le.
Kiri tre, kere lele masile. And certainly, we should have a little education. So, now is about nineteen years, three na lele na lichele. Marahayna development, even nida. I think maybe five years back, riri na lele masile at. Riri na lele di nidi lele di RDP. If I am a nitardele, hardele rirana na tal. Do you do that to me, to be crazy, to be yana? But I don't know, that's not better beat to the location, my name is. I said, change your name, I'm sure, I'm a share, I'm a better beat. And I only know the name. Riri, that's the name of the machine. And I'm a, rayne da 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 na serena, kiana it. Do they, institution, then I channelize the time it's a name in mass. My hatamufasi, kataba ni na yana. I'm a man who can't kill me, na, tell la erla, I do it like that, such as. To the name of the people, eh, I'm a man who can't understand. That's a share, let's get the shoes there, let's go la, that's the way, we're here, that's the way it go. But you got to end it, but then that's the end of the year. To the name of the people, rirana li me, me can't understand. Let's say, let's give it, let's make last. Let me go down, let's say, let me tell me, and let's say, let me tell me. So, it's a, hanan de, hanan hanan. And I never, I never, I don't know, to the name of the people. Let's say, let's hear to the gate, that's all I do, tell me, tell me, tell me. Tell it last, tell me, my next, my right. Yeah, I'm a girl, my name is, let's get the shoes there, let's last again. Let me be a girl, if I'm a bad one, let's say, na me. Me, I don't know, president, J. Patzuma. Here, I tell you that's the rule. I tell you that I'm a girl, I'm a girl, I'm a girl. Do you say yana? To the name say yana, I'm a girl. But I never, 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 I never. My name is, I'm a girl, I'm a girl. But I'm a girl, I'm a girl. You know, I can, if I'm a girl, I'm a girl, I'm a girl. It's very nice, I'm a girl, I'm a girl. My name is, I'm a girl, I'm a girl. And I need to know, I know.
Chobe la. Eh, wa wale la mo. Eh, wa wale la mo ki alias da foma. Eh, ota ka alma, maspa le wa mu di mule. Eh. No la, orati le, unta la masoko, ba tiki ta mu tala pele. Because, let's go to fatwa, wa wale la mta yana. Wa chuli teli gedi, kimi ta di wa. I did my level best. Kiri lele, hinda fana kana, pambili teli di wa nari le. Kiri dokibenzitari le, araka fala ato. Leba yute development, legal aid, land affairs, aca kira truth. Papa to che, di gedi di che, di papa ka fana owa nari fana cha ha. I change owa nari fana cha change, I failed me, musutwa ba re ta mo, eh, yana.
Rbica la, rehopela ler leri jen sirias, kiale bo.
Eh. Program Director.
Can you take these hands, we are coming. Can you take, can you just take the ones who are standing, please?
Eh, Program Director. The former President of this country, Kumrit Garama Mtante. Lenna ki juwa loa ma bula, ki juwa golfasela la palalewa. Kena na ore, everyone in this world, is aware ore, this government led by the ANC. Eh, aha drop a hollow kuwa le palale. So, re aha drop a hollow kuwa le palale. Mo la land ya re na kamo ka kuwa le palale. Estaleka is where I give the mine. Rehopela, rehopela di mine, cheka mo ga di lengole palale, including Xaru. And Midupi Escom. Ore, I give a le, a release a land. So that, ba to ba ba grota ningwa le palale. Ba honova le enough spaces a udula. Rehopela Midupi Escom, eh, benefit eba na wa le palale. Are you gonna, or Midupi, is a national project. But what you are saying is young people from the palale. Ke ore, higher benefit, I enjoy the bizarre, Midupi. Me ma ne ka mo ga ilengwa ore na. I care benefit leadership. Real rehopela, eh, let's go, ah, liya ko parlamenti. I care the fatigue, I'm like, I want to, di campaign di lengwa le palalewa. Adi le ke ore benefit, adi le ke ore benefit, ja la kaba na wa le palale. Sa ba fela se kina go, so want cha go ore. Ke rehopela ler du meri, ler du meri jetengi, eh, Deputy President, Kumrit Serrama, posa kiri du me la.
Chobe la. Kiri loche ka mo ka, kire bo re, muswa ra mara posa ba kase, li mpele nsona. Kire bo re, li panela ya re na kamo ka, li mta je, li mta je mutandi. Se kina ka musu wantcha, mo tu ore, government ya re na, ay ka mo le sa edunla re na es communities. On the ground, the origin campaign, je di tande jo prospect. Le kiri jo maina goa ore na. There is no consultation with the community. And the department ya di mineral, ito ere faila, kudu, 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 kudu mo lungore. Aba monitor process ya di mining on the ground. Aba nyako otsi ba or di mining right, tili di mining license je. Eh, wa maina go di community. This is a machine, whether this is a vehicle. So, Renare abuloka ka peace. My visa no harame tiwa, ba to ba le, na se ba arsuri, ba buluki ka peace. And then, yango ya pekina go, we pile cha go ore. Consultation with the community must be required by law. Because, Renare es community, re re, nothing about us without us. And then, yango ya kina go, we want cha kiri. There is this thing ya mining operation pagisa. So, hey, tamo Renare wa nava re operation pagisa. Which means, ra ore, mine must come and mine fast. Renare re, let's reject the mining pagisa, reta ka mining begisa. But on the ground, because already, the damage is already done. So, me wa ne yo kona on the ground, je was no maina, wa epa milizi, was ya milizi. And then, aba ikupeji, livestock ya re na in danger. Pulai di na ba na ba wa yana, re abuloka. So, there must be a law. Ye jo ba info sa ngoro, ba ya ko fase, ba o, di a land rehabilitation. Ra go ba la ko fase. And then, yango ya kina go, we want cha, yo lungore, bila ge service ali impopo. Ye dispute ya traditional leadership. Mo li impopo mo, di xoshi je di nchi, asidi xoshi cha maleba. Re, uno, di je di claim je di nchi, di nchi. Mo lungore di resolve wi, go di xoshi je. Le wo etapi le wo, wo ba re na, na mo li impopo. Ba se ne ka cha go, fi tja kalu ko tu ka ra di mine. Di commission di nchi je di result, cha wuncha, poli cha wa ra, ucha yi. Di royal family, di result, Mara nowhere to go. Ba di re, re nakamalawa, uno lungore, to tana ka mo li impopo, ka mo wantcha wo manager. Service otsu limo, kisa sugul. Ya masanle kito ya di service delivery. There is a budget from the mine ye ya go di Anglo Platinum. Eh, ba to apu entaro, to ba, kira di RDP li di twilight. When all wa inkata ka, wa ba sen, there is no service delivery. Re nakarata ka, a concrete solution, because, thirty four, we did that in nineteen ninety four. There really was a service delivery, jo recovera ka mo ka. Whether wa black or white, jo wa ro, wa mo cha, o, binadinaka. Service delivery change, you fit a land, ja la ka mo judi wa South Africa. In nineteen ninety four, the last point, ya ka ya masalo, in nineteen ninety four, were voted. Ra, would your education is for free. Would ra ka lang South Africa es a whole, ka business fund. For the rural village, anijwa le, repacha la mo kolo ko tu, aniriviti wa mitini. Repacha la security, cost go lo, hundred and twenty per month. Re je, go to social grant. Imagine, oka ra, three twenty, upacha la, scholar to a hundred and twenty months. Upacha la security, mo na go ya ka, o se kurchi sa wa, ilimcha le ka taan. Re nakamalawa, mo peti.
Wa li du meri cha mo gi, doctor to saa go. Ken na mo, eh, me di wa di nga ka. Kisa ger tari, wa na ka mo, wa nga ken via so tu. Lenna, re, ke mu thulu reki alla, kiswa na lele na. Mamu ta re, le Renare, tabaru seruno nyana risha, ka ka ere, tange ma mo ta. Yalo, se lo sa Renare, mamu ta re lu kumane, le Renare, glolle la mo Renare, di tava tara na, li di puthele, li ru sa re, ka ma towa ma bedi. Ka go re, Renare, re le mo fas, ka mo ka, iki tele, di te ka mo ka reala. Aguna wa sa le, ibile aguna ndwe sa sinye ka, ndwe ngo le, ngo sinye kile mo fas. Kina go, agore, le te le ru tushie. Le te le ru tushie me za ru egi, roko no go akapka, mo ka ra ga mo ta. Wa na ba Renare, geni tri. Ba fula di nyaope, re sa zivu go na, li fula le, li juwa la, li nyaope, li juwa ka ya. Wa na ba Renare, ba Renaya, da ka mo ma la pe. Eh, ne gare re ya eme, ma Renare tushu. Eh, ne wa na ba ahoja. Eh, ba ahoja, aga ba ba diya blani a chele tri. Mushua Renare, wa ona lo go ta. Uno, wa na lo go ma binda, wa ile kila go ra go peti, Renare kile ki wa lela ka re. Ora, ora kina go, agore, recipe le ka mo ka. Eh, ne le shubala osepe la, le beli lo go wa na, mamu ta re nyaga lo shubala osepe la. Le sa to la le, ba ona. Le Renare, re swane, le ba to ba, ngo ro go la, li di to go la, tara na, li di roko no go go la, ba te ba roko no go, wa na mu ta la ka Renare. Se kisi eme di mo, ki eme di fela ma nga ka, ma nga ka, mu di mo, eh, eri tele, di te di re diu. Ba fela ba bulela go re ma nga ka, ba la ya. Mara, aru ko no kuisha or na ba ba la, wa angar ba, to ba ba pidi xa ba tu. Eh, ne, ba pidi xa, ba ba la ya. Mo la, ma na wa la, Renare, du di mo ka, ufi, ancha ba na ba Renare di mpa. Eh, ne, ba sa bulelu. Yalo, mamu ta re, roko pa la, mushua Renare, are ya jo ka go, mo ni, ri tija ke ba di mu ba Renare, go re, te roko no go ta ka na lele. O, loche ka, mo ka na ka jo na di di sa lu ka, adi siye, lo ri di wa. Aguna wa sa le, ika ba ma po di sa, ika ba, ingwa ba to ba mu di bu ba, eme ya eme, ma Mara nyaope, wa na ba Renare, ba te ki tu ropo, re pe la mo tu ropo. Ba te ki tu ropo, ba fula di nyaope, ba ba le, ka ya, mushua go ka. Mamu ta re, mamu ta re, re kumane, di le re, Renare, ba bulela, ka na mu di pele tara, roko no go tu ya, ka le ri swa. Ri, ri tu ka, ra ka tu go na ra ta ka ra lo go na ne. Yalo, mamu sa na ka ra ri bo ni, manjuwa Renare, ka mo ka na ka ona. Liya puthele, liya swa re. Ka ora, kiri gasbi ka na, ona ndwe ka lu ka. Ya eme mo ki jeni manka, wa ujoa bohom. Ki joa kiri wa ti tu. Eh, lenna yana, ki eme juwa le wa maspa la wa ka wa blowback. Ki eme juwa le wa maspa la wa ka wa blowback, eh, kiri musaliwa ya joa le la, Brain Beijing Cooperative. Wa kudu la ngo na re ya vereka, ba sadhi, ba sadhi, ba to wa furuwa ya, ra ya merokong. Eh, lenna yana, talakala pe la ka iti le, le ba sadhi ba kibereka li di wa ona. Eh, ne ba sadhi, bana emele la, nglesika la la, li du ju fasela re, musaliwa ngo ka pa mu no, ngo juwa le ya eme ya eme. Ika me, ka me le, ngi, eh, lele na ba sadhi. Ni ika mele, se wa ne sinye ka nglusu kumane. Na mo kudu ju ngo na ka na sa ba kasa na si. Project ya mete ya re ya hatampana. Project ya di RDP ya re ya hatampana. Eh, le na, eh, le na project ya ki bereka ni. It's from the like nineteen ninety seven. Liya ni juwa ne, esani BC juwa le pele, he kudu ju mo. Ni message liya sena, ba nyaka li oda, ya di bantil, ya di keke, ya di biscigi. Eh, le maspa la wa ka ki awo, ne wa, maspa la wa blowback. Go re, ibile, akibila ya ne, se se ngo ne, se se ngo ba ri liye ju, so na se riti ya ka na ra, project ya Renare. Ki eme juwa ne wa na ki ya eme la, uso la, say lo, se u, maspa la wa liye ju so na. Mo wa ti tu blowback. Kina jeni manka, ki joa, kiri ha ma ka bohom. Kiale wa.
No, only one. Now, please sit down. Okay, let's sit down, let's sit down. Please let's sit down. Please let's sit down, let's drop the hands. Let's drop the hands, please. Let's drop the hands, please let's sit down. Let's sit down. Just one more minute. Just one more minute, please. Just one more mi- minute, please. Just one more minute. Let's do this. Let's appreciate first and foremost that we took. We took fourteen hands from this side. So, please drop all the hands this side. When we come to this side. We will note a passing. And then you come to the mic. We are now exactly at seven minutes before five. And you know that we have to take care of the safety of the people who must travel three hundred kilometers. So, we must be fair that we close this meeting in the good spirit. Over and above that. The services of writing is trepezane and submitting it is still available. And so. I want to also humbly request that you have taken a lot of hands from the front to the middle. Can we go to the back this side as well? Eh. You are making it difficult if you are standing and I have to note hands. The red cap, number one, please come to the mic. Number two, Ausica with the white top, go to the mic as number two. Number three stripes to the mic. Who were sensitized about gender, number four. Mama, Kopili, go to the front. Wait, no, it's me, it's me. Eh, Ausica, eh, dress pink, you are number five. And the last one. After that, we will invite the chapter scene of the high level panel to make reflections, please. Eh, colleagues, I think I have to make this intervention. We will never proceed there. May I request that we invite the chapter scene to come and close. And then we proceed tomorrow. Thank you very much. Chapter scene over to you. Let's close. We'll never get it right. They are fighting about the mic. There's five that was noted in light of the commotion. Our humble request is that the five should also allow that we close. And then leave and continue tomorrow. Is that acceptable? Thank you very much. Let's now invite friends and Halima to come and address us. And request everyone to sit down and then we continue tomorrow. Amanza. Amanza. Mata. Amanza. Mai salepan, tribambumte.
Our, eh, re le, re le wo re. Eh, ay le mo le, le sa la go, na bile, eh, le wi choa ro ba le, na ka go re. Ko province in Zedin, Asseritla Mo Ma Petelo. Eh, ra ba re seti ka ba to ba, teni wa le. Wa le le na olo is atlechi. Eh, ki, ki, Renare le panela, reala le wo re. Rea, reala le wo re, bil e, reala, reala le tepi cha go re. Le di locha le na ri kuwele, re ngo le le mo fas. Eh. Ha, eh, Program Director, wa Renare, mu thutsanzea re, elavulela. Ati tivi sho re, na ke, na man, wa ka ya. Ri diela go, aru ti ya di note. Re tja re tsebo, manjuwa ki aga maanga. Wa le. Uno, ema ta ta ma nga le. Eh, ler ku di jenka o, na ilen go re. Agutso ke go re, ay emele, re verifete, meri ko ka julai. Ka go re, amanga o na. Eh, re konagore. Re ngo le ministera, no udu. Le ngo alo re mutu bi sha, re ministera, mo si chavase alla, ka seli, 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 seli. Ngoo ye mo la, olu kisha tabachi. Wa le ibe meri koa Renare. Eh, hutso kome la, ora, utla si dia se uwe ka ba joa. Ka go re.
It's not all problems that should really wait for the final report. Some issues are issues that can be resolved. Even before, eh, we get to the end of the panel's work. By simply dropping a note. To a relevant minister or EMC or mayor, whatever the case may be. To state very clearly that the following problem can be resolved as follows. Please attend to it. Now, ke ka mo re, are le, popela re, eh, ler bu, cheka bu tu re. Renare kali tusha joa. Wa le. Eh. Baba anka, toa ili, ba juola ba la, ba vo cola. Eh, ba serboju, ba ba di la mo fas, se wa, warboju go re, kali tusha joa. Ka ore, sa Renare, ke go re, eh, re tja re konu re, really tush. Iskano, ba ore no, ka muswa na le tara wa, eh, le paneli bi, le fa. Ga wa go, go ro lo, go ro lo, go re, ibe lo re, ma ta ta wa sa la go. Aranya kika mu ka uwi. Eh. Mu ka la, yo mu, eh, mu khae le, udi ye mo arre, aguna mushu, aru na mushu. Ar, aru na mushu, awa re no, bule di shana, ka re, ra ba tu la re. Wa le, aranya go, ba to ba, bule le ka mo fu to uwi. Eh, aguna le problemi, eh, ma ta ta ilen go re, mushu oka kono, o, o alukishi. Sa Renare, go go juwa mushu. Ka go re, mushu wa ufele pe. Mushu, mushu wa atwa na ufe la pe. Eh, chavase, kiso na mushu, ka bu tu, ka go re. Eh, kiso na su, keta, ba to ba, lenka mo mushu. Eh, kama njuwa uwe ki re, awa re le kuwele ki amashu e, ure ala wo re. Eh, na re ka muswa na tla re le mo. Ay ba elo go re lele na, li tu tohole, eh, hosana, li se, se lo nyaka go re, re se tsebe. Awa le ka muswa na, le, le wo uwi, le be le re na oke. Wa le, ba o ba le, na ba ba yang tohole. Eh, awa tla le, ya le mu di ta pe lo go re, le su pe la ka bu tu. Eh, mu di mu ba lele, na skela, toa la kiri koju. Eh, kiale wo.